Wanted to have a moment of silence for Mr. Mott, so. Could we entertain a motion to change our agenda and add a moment of silence for Mr. Mott at the beginning of the meeting?
Almost moved.
All right.
Okay, so we have, well, I guess we have to take a roll for that though, don't we? So Sarah, if you would take the role on the amended agenda, please.
Thank you. Mayor Maves, would you start, please?
Yes, in Alma, Michigan.
Thank you. Commissioner Piccolo?
Yes, Alma, Michigan.
Commissioner Pitts?
Yes, in Alma, Michigan.
Commissioner Stoll?
Yes, Alma.
Commissioner Almond?
Yes, in Alma, Michigan.
And Vice Mayor Harrington?
Yes, in Alma, Michigan.
Pass, we have an amended agenda, so let us begin with a moment of silence for Larry. His passing. Okay, thank you very much. That was a long week we've had there for losing him. The rule has been called, Sarah?
Yes, thank you.
Taking that. Okay, so next up would be the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe you're gonna put a flag up, is that correct?
Yes.
Everyone, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Sarah, and thank you all very much. I guess I should mention the point of order. The reason everybody acknowledged their vote with a yes and then stated Alma, Michigan where you're at, apparently that's a new requirement. And Matt or Sarah, could you clarify, we only need to do that once, or do we need to do that every time there's a vote?
No, correct, just at, just at roll call, and that's, that's a part of the new provisions in the Open Meetings Act and of which we approved at the last meeting under the, under the Health Department rules that we're currently operating under that allow us to do virtual meetings.
Okay, so we don't need to do that every time, just to clarify, so thank you. Appreciate that. Next up, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the November 10th regular meeting and the November 17th 2020 work session meetings. Your pleasure.
Almost.
Support.
Have motion in support of there any comments, questions, corrections? Okay, hearing done, we'll move that to a vote. Sarah, if you would, please.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harrington?
Yes.
Mayor Maves?
Yes.
Commissioner Piccolo?
Yes.
Mister Pitts?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoll?
Yes.
Commissioner Almond?
Yes.
Thank you.
Pass, thank you very much. Moving on down for recommendation on bids. We are in review of the quotes and received for the telework hardware project including 25 desktop PCs, 52 monitors, 32 scanners and printers, scanners slash printers, combination units, I believe, 24 webcam, webcams, and also consideration of a resolution to award the project and approve of a corresponding request for purchase. The recommended bidder is Dell Technologies at $36,648.73. The only, I believe the only other bid we have, one listed here is Hewlett Packard at 36,714 spot 40, so. Your pleasure.
Move approval.
Support.
Here we have motion in support, are there any comments or questions? Seems we've all talked about this before, but Matt, do you want to give a little background for the public?
Yeah, this is, this is money that will be available, well, has already been given to us through the CARES Act, through the CR LGG grant, through the federal government that's funneled through the state. We received $81,000 in grant money that we are allowed to use for telework or acquisition of personal protection equipment. And so this is the second round of monies that we have used through this, through this process. This allows us to have every administrator and every supervisor plus critical staff that we know as we've started to make some changes here of work from home and made some changes in our hours. This allows us to give access to everybody to be able to function that way. The interesting part about having this is PCs instead of laptops and different things is, in our mind, the real good aspect of this is this isn't stuff that sits on a shelf then until we have another crisis. When, when this passes, we still have this hardware that we can use and put into our systems and to make replacements, so will help us also long term. And that's, that's why you see that, that we have the dual monitors, you'll see twice as many monitors, I think everybody's probably, become so used to, it's hard to function without a dual monitor anymore, so we figured we would use it through there, so we'll be bringing more back. This leaves us, just so that you know, from the 80,000 original, we are now sitting at a little over $16,000 still left in the grant that will be, David and I will be meeting next week to try and break down to stock up on the PPE equipment. Depending on how long this goes, we want to make sure that we have all that here.
Very important. Okay, who has the first question for Matt?
I don't, this might, well, this most definitely is probably the wrong place to ask this, but when I was at City Hall today, and Amy has, they have the plastic or glass up now, which is protecting them from germs and people. But I had asked if it was bulletproof, if we splurged for that extra money, and she said no. And so I just, I just wanted to bring it up that I know we, I mean, there's of course a big open spot and there's places that, but I did, I thought we had discussed at one point making things safer there, are we still thinking about that? I know at the school they came, and I'm sure it cost a gajillion dollars, but they put these like contact sheets that were supposed to make things, crack proof that they put right over the window, so I just, I, I just wanted to bring it up that if we keep that in mind someday when we have some money to spend on things to, or if that, if we were headed that direction and thinking about safety still for our people.
And I don't think anything's changed on that, other than, I mean, through COVID, some of the things that we've had, contracted prices are extremely high right now, too. These were things that we have both here, the library, the police department, that were all put together specifically for COVID by staff, and, and so you know, we all, we have gone back and received some of the partial money in March, April. We were able to also get back through the CR LGG, so it was paid for through there, but that, none of this will alter, it may alter our thinking on how we would do certain things, but we're still working on getting our door redone right here so that that's all closed off, so no, those are still in the plans, this won't alter that at all.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Anybody else? Hey, hearing no additional questions, Sarah, if you would please take the role on that motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Piccolo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pitts?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoll?
Yes.
Commissioner Almond?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Yes.
And Mayor Maves?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion is passed, thank you, Sarah, appreciate that. Next on the items, or on the agenda here, right on the bids is recommendation or consideration of a resolution to receive bids for the Hoffman Road demolition project, award the project, and approve a corresponding request for purchase and authorize the city manager Matt Scully, sign the contract on behalf of the city. It lists, let's see, one, two, three, four, five different bids were received on November 13th, 2020. The recommended bidder is, is it Road Brothers? Is that how you pronounce that?
Roadie.
Roadie Brothers, okay, out of Saginaw, there is also bids from Beer Line, Bowl Construction, Bali Construction.
Bully, yep.
Bully, okay, sorry, Bully Contracting. Pitch Company and Shaw Contracting, bids look like they range from 69, 695 up to 117,900. Recommended bidder is that Roadie Brothers at the low bid of 69, 695 for the total package. Who's giving us background, Eric, did you want to go through some of this?
Yeah, we can do that right now, sure.
Or Matt, I guess.
Yep, we can do that.
Where is most appropriate?
Yep. We finished up.
I'm sorry, Eric, I don't think we got a motion yet, did we?
Nope, we did not.
Okay, so let me get the motion first, so I keep my process straight, please, thank you.
Move approval.
Thanks, Nick.
Support.
And Roger, it looks like, so, okay, Eric, please go ahead.
Okay, sure, yep, no problem. We finished up the barn demos from bar ring claimers who reclaimed the wood, as you can see from the photos. They did a real nice job of putting things back together there. Getting there on that construction time schedule with that removal, we sent out the bids on November 2nd. We sent them all over the place here locally, and obviously from, you can see this all across the mid, mid part of the state here. We did receive five back. Contractors are really busy, and also within our bid, I mentioned in our, in my memo to Matt, that this is a pretty tight timeline. If it's approved tonight with a low bidder, we will be buttoned up and invoiced by December 21st. And the reason for that is that we want to get this submitted back to MEDC and close out that grant with them that we have with them for $50,000 for this project. They've been kind of after us, how are we gonna get, you know, when are we gonna get this thing done, even though we didn't sign the contracts until February of this, this year? But we can hit the schedule. We met with the low bidder, Roadie Brothers, and talked a little bit about timing, they can get started tomorrow with the environmental abatement. And we did discuss in alternates one, two, and three. Alternate one will stay as is, but to also help with some of that was cost on the alternates that we would work with them on how much topsoil we do need out there, because that would be used as some agricultural land until it's ready for someone to come in from an industrial standpoint. And that we removed alternate three, which is reseeding, there was no sense of putting some seed down since we're gonna be going, with that was for a farm standpoint. And AKT Peerless, who's our, I'm very much consultant on this, has worked with Roadie Brothers and has, has good things to say. And the conversation I had with them last week, I can support the, the recommendation of that little bid. So that's it.
Eric? Who has the first question?
I, I have a question. I'm looking at the previous bids, which were very close, and the range in this one, and sometimes we've got a range like that. Someone's left something out, or they're lowballing us, and they're gonna come back for change orders or things like that. Are you comfortable with this, Eric? It seems like there's such a wide, wide range.
Yeah, yes, Nick, yeah, after talking with our consultant, who's works with plenty of communities on demolition, and has worked with Roadie, and then also I did speak with Dave Ringel about his feelings on what we have in the, in the breakdown for the bid specs. Also included in there was the bid tab, talking about each one of those items. And I think we're covered well enough in there that, that, that we will have everything removed to our satisfaction and the state of Michigan satisfaction.
Thank you.
The next question. If any. Okay, I don't hear any more questions, so Sarah, if you would please move the vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Piccolo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pitts?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoll?
Yes.
Commissioner Almond?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Yes.
And Mayor Maves?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, and that motion is passed as well. So moving on to resolutions, we'll consider a resolution proclaiming November 30th, 2020 as Arbor Day in the city of Alma.
So.
Approval or support, whichever you need.
Okay, Sarah, do you have it clear, clear?
Yes, thank you.
We have a motion in support, are there any comments or questions? I think I asked this last year, but anybody remember how many years we've done doing this? It's a lot, I know that. Nobody's looked it up, have you?
Now that the thing's off the front wall, I can't remember, because they used to have the little stickers along the whole way, but it went quite a ways, I mean.
It's a whole lot of years, probably back into the 70s, maybe?
Most likely, yes.
Okay, I think it's around 30 years at least, last I knew, so we're at 30 plus years, I believe.
Oh, good, it's, it's a good program, so glad to be a part of it. Any other comments, questions?
If you notice, it's later this year, it's because of COVID. The, that's a question that comes up, normally we do this in the spring, but all the nurseries were closed during that, and when they did open up, it was summer. Summer's not a good time to plant trees, so we pushed it off till fall, and so we will have the time to get those trees planted next, probably be the November 30th and 1st, there's four trees we're planning to plant in honor of it, so that's why there's a delay in it.
Okay, terrific, thank you, David. Anybody else have comments, questions? Hearing no further, Sarah, if you would please take the vote?
Yes. Commissioner Pitts?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoll?
Yes.
Commissioner Almond?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Yes.
Mayor Maves?
Yes.
And Commissioner Piccolo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah, that motion is also passed. Move down to number two, which is consideration of a resolution to ratify a temporary traffic control order number 156, which will allow on-street parking along the west side of Highland Avenue from November 7, 2020, through November 16, 2020. And the notation on this motion or this item states that traffic control measures recommended to temporarily allow residents that live on Hayes Avenue to park along Highland Avenue until the drive approaches are placed along Hayes Avenue. And it's a continuation of a previously approved traffic control over order number 155, so. Apparently we're not falling behind on this project, Dave, is that where the?
No, this is, this is actually old, supposed to go to the last commission meeting, but this is all done. We had it closed through this, so this is basically a formality to, that you gave us permission to extend that. Actually, the 16th, probably the 15th, but the 16th officially, we were done with this because those drive approaches were able to be driven on. So Hayes Avenue, as far as construction is completed, and what this does is ratifies what we had already done with keeping those no parking signs bagged up, but there's no reason now to allow for parking on the side of that street now, that's all well and done. So there's no extension needed, we were actually done with this on the 16th, needed no more extensions.
We're not extending beyond that now.
Correct, yes, there's no need to extend any further, but this will put it in reality for what happened during that time span.
Believe we had a motion or support yet, is that correct, Sarah?
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll entertain a motion then at this point. So moved, support, Roger and Nick, I think, are there any additional comments or questions? Just one, I've been by there a few times, looks like the project is very nice, well done, glad to see that, brought back up to current standards, so.
We started ahead of the weather for, for once, it, it all worked out, so it's nice to have things, whether it's luck or anything like that involved, it was nice to have it done before we had any early snow season and, and early cold, so it was nice to have.
Vote then, Sarah, if you would, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Stoll?
Yes.
Commissioner Almond?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Yes.
Mayor Maves?
Yes.
Commissioner Piccolo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pitts?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, looks like that motion is passed as well. So we'll move on down to agreements, and we have to consider a resolution to enter into a lease agreement with Dalton Properties LLC for the lease of cold storage space at a property owned by the city of Alma, commonly known as 6524 North Jerome Road, for the term of one year, beginning January 1st, 2021. Your pleasure. Move approval.
Support.
Hey, we have a motion in support. Eric, do you have background on this, or Matt?
We've, I think we've.
It's a ongoing thing, I know, but.
Yeah, I think this is, this is the fourth year, I believe, or the fifth year, fourth year, I believe, that we've had out there, and it's a, it's a stone building or brick, or some building, cold storage, they use basically for parking trucks and some different things out there.
It's located around the corner of Hoffman Road and Jerome's, Jerome Road.
It's still the old Hicks company, a lot of us, I'm sure.
Yep.
All right, is anybody having comments or questions? Hearing done, we'll move to the vote again, Sarah, if you would, please.
Sure. Commissioner Almond?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Yes.
Mayor Maves? Sorry, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Piccolo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pitts?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stoll?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, Sarah, thank you, Sarah, that motion is passed as well. We'll move on down to reports, we have two to receive this night, tonight, Alma Transit, October 2020 report, and the city manager's report for November 2020. Your pleasure, would you like to pull any of those or receive them as is?
Move to receive and pull the city manager's report.
Support.
Have motion support. So Sarah, if you would take the vote on the, I guess it'd be the transit report, well, I guess does anybody have any questions on the transit report at this point? It's not, we didn't pull it, so, Sarah, if you would please take the vote on that report.
Yes, thank you. Vice Mayor Harrington?
Yes.
Mayor Maves?
Yes.
Commissioner Piccolo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pitts?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoll?
Yes.
Commissioner Almond?
Yes.
Thank you.
Fairly, that motion has passed, city manager's report, Matt. Well, I guess we need a motion to accept that, right, first, sorry? Lot of motions here. And we. Support. Here we have motion support, now Matt, if you would, please.
Okay, a lot of the items on the report were actually in, in the agenda this week, but the, the first one up there is the Michigan Municipal League's Community Stabilization Plan, that they are looking for some assistance on us to show some support. Really, they've, they've come up with a plan, which I forwarded to you guys, really looking to do three main issues that they're talking about, is the Open Meetings Act that we started the whole meeting talking about tonight. The real idea is that this, things aren't going to change enough by December 31st of 2020 to make some of those changes, so they're gonna, they're gonna look for some legislative action that will push that deadline a little bit further, so that we're able to continue to function just like we are today, without making some of the changes that are gonna be authorized, that will have to come up as far as differences in reasons as to why we could still have a virtual meeting. The reality is the order may still be in place, which would make this all null, but I know they're trying to protect legislatively against an order not existing, but still having other issues and communities not having to have the responsibility one-on-one to always make those decisions. The second is to talk about really finances as to where this impact is gonna go long term, I think we've been very, very fortunate as to how we've still been able to receive some monies that are coming in, our tax base came through and, and folks paid their taxes, as we look further on down the road here, just to give you an example, I think I've, I've mentioned to you the Public Safety Reimbursement Grant that I had written for $227,000, which was to give us public, the reimbursement for public safety wages and salaries and benefits from April and May earlier this year. I did receive an email on Friday from the Treasury Department that that was $200 million that had been allocated for that grant. And if you remember, back in September, we did receive $113,000 of that grant. And we're supposed to get the second half, early December. Well, the $200 million that had been allocated, actually, there were $358 million that had been requested statewide for that money. So already there's been a change in that, I had to resubmit some things, they redefined some of the definitions as to what was eligible, and I would, I reduced our request by about $20,000. But now what we'll get back is probably in the next week or so, it'll be a prorated amount of what we were actually asking for of the 227. So some of that monies are, some of the monies we're expecting, we're not coming back, so the importance of we have to continue to put the pressure on the legislators and to make sure, so there is a, and I think I sent it out to you folks this afternoon, if you're available, if not, you can always get to it, there is a webinar that, that the league will be putting out on Monday morning to, to explain their process a little bit better, and then there is a link where we can send some information and, and to our state legislators, so they know that, that we're behind that, so I would appreciate any support you can give on that. Unfortunately, as we know by action, and, and everybody has made the decision, like, like just about everybody around, that the, the Christmas celebrations are are either canceled or gonna be much, much different this year. And so the, they come home to Alma, celebration will be canceled, but I am, I'm happy to say that they've decided to continue the Jingle Bell Run, so we can offer something to the community during that time, and it will be run in a way that everybody doesn't have to start at the starting line, Eric explains it to me, your chip will start when you cross the starting line and finish when you cross the finish line, so, and it's just an out and back, really on the rail trail now, so. It's nice, it'll be starting over at the Heritage Center parking lot, and there with a bigger area where we, we're sure we can accommodate folks, so I'm glad to see that we're still looking to have that go. I've given you, we've already talked about the, the relief, the CR LGG grant, where our balance is, and we'll continue to get on that here in this next week to solidify that last thing for PPE and making sure that we have all the, the proper, when I'm talking about PP, we're talking about anything that ranges from our, making sure we can fill our hand sanitizers all over our city buildings to the masks, the cloth mask wear for workers, to the N95 masks that we have for certain departments. Shields, we have, we now have some shields, thank you, Sarah, that was left over from the election, that staff is free to use also, if they're more comfortable wearing one of the shields with the mask over there. And so I, I, I think that this worked out real well with, when with the telework of getting that done, but still having a little, right around $16,000 to make sure that we can stack that PPE, so looking forward to getting that done here in the next week. And then the other things I had written about, we're gonna discuss anyway here of, of how we're gonna deal with the vacancy and everything on the commission, so if there's any questions, I'm free to take right now.
First question for Matt. No questions, very good. All right, so Sarah, if you would take the vote to receive the, the report.
Yes, thank you. Mayor Maves, would you start, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Piccolo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pitts?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoll?
Yes.
Commissioner Almond?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sarah, looks like that has passed as well, and we have received both those reports. Under unfinished business, we need to consider a resolution authorizing the inter-local agreement with Gresham County and the assessing districts in Gresham County to approve a designated assessor for the period of January 1, 2021, through December 31, 2025, and to authorize signatures as necessary. Your pleasure. All right. Motion support, are there any comments and questions this time? We did have, obviously that was a big topic on our work session we had last week, so. Is there any background or anybody having questions remaining? Hearing none, well, go ahead and with the vote then, Sarah, if you would, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Piccolo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pitts?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoll?
Yes.
Commissioner Almond?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Yes.
Mayor Maves?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, looks like that has passed as well. Under new business, we have a discussion in the process of the appointment pursuant to section 2.7 of the Alma City Charter regarding vacancies in the city commission. Obviously, this is in regards to the recent passing of Commissioner Mott. Rather untimely, but we still have to deal with it. Even though it seems too soon to even be discussing things where we've got this timeframe, so. Did, were we gonna have Tony give some background here, is that your intention, Matt?
Yeah, I'm intention was to have the city attorney discuss the, the section and what, and, and what the process would look like. So, you know, we're not making any decisions tonight as far as that, this is a discussion and explanation of what the process would look like.
Correct, thank you.
And there are, there are, there are two provisions in the charter that are theoretically at play here. You know, initially, when Larry announced to us the last commission meeting that he had COVID and he was in the hospital, Sarah had contacted me because of the provision that says, this is section 2.5 of the charter, that within 10 days after an election, they have to take an oath. The question was, how is Larry gonna take the oath if he's isolated in a COVID ward? And we were working on that, and then tragically, when Larry passed, obviously that wasn't the issue anymore, but that 10 days expired then, November 13th. And then obviously, section 2.3 of, of the, of the charter talks. Section 2.3 of, of the, of the charter talks about reasons for vacancy, and obviously, one of those is the death of any member of the commission. So either way, this created a vacancy. And, and what makes this even more difficult, obviously, this was tragic, is, is what happens with, when there's a vacancy? I mean, the, the circumstances here are very unique because we just had an election. And, and I know Commissioner-elect Wernick, we had a conversation because he, he had come up with, I think, probably what maybe was the most logical way to handle this. Would, would maybe be, let's just, you know, Larry tragically passes away, and so everybody moves up. And so Commissioner-elect Wernick would then move into the second slot. And then Commissioner Piccolo would then move into the, you know, the, the, the next one, and, and they would then, that would work out fine. But unfortunately, the way the charter reads is that whether it's by death or whether it's by failure to take the oath, Larry's position on the city commission is vacant. And Section 6, or 2.7 of the charter talks about how you deal with vacancy. And when there is a vacancy, if it's more than 60 days prior to an election, and obviously, we just had an election, so this is way more than 60 days prior, the commission selects a qualified person to sit on the city commission to fill the vacancy. And that individual serves until the next general election. So whoever the commission appoints will be a commissioner until the next general election, which will be two years hence. So they'll serve two years and a and, and, I mean, assuming that you're gonna make the decision at the next meeting because you have 30 days. So I, you know, the timeframe will work out where you're gonna make the decision at the first meeting in December. That person is gonna fill the rest of this slot and then the next two years, and then, and then obviously, they'll be up for election. With respect to Commissioner-elect Wernick, he's still in that two-year term. And, and the, the reason is, like I say, because this created a vacancy, and the charter is explicit on how you deal with a vacancy. We talked about a couple of things. I mean, obviously, the commission is free to pick a qualified person to be on the city commission. This is a unique situation, however, where we just had an election. And Commissioner Piccolo, as I understand it, and I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, but I think he missed being in fourth place by 32 votes, maybe, something like that? So there were about 1,400 individuals in the city of Alma that agreed with me that, that Mr. Piccolo's qualified, and I think agreed with the rest of us, too. And so that would be an option here. It's a little tricky, though, because Commissioner Piccolo is a sitting commissioner, and he can't be appointed to serve another spot when he's on the commission. So if Commissioner Piccolo wanted to do this, and if the commission wanted to do this, and this is just an option, it's not something that has to be done, you're free to pick whoever you're gonna pick. But it would be possible Commissioner Piccolo would offer his resignation before the next, in December, but before the next meeting. The commission could then appoint Commissioner Piccolo again, and he would serve another two-year term. And then January 1st or the first meeting after that, Commissioner-elect Wernick would take his post. And that's how you would fill these slots. Now, that's just an option. Commission makes their decision. And obviously, you can, you can entertain anyone else as a, as a qualified, as long as they possess the qualifications, as, as, as a possible commissioner. But that's the way the charter, you know, tells us to do it. And the charter is consistent with state law. I looked at, at various statutes dealing with vacancies in city commissions, in county commissions, township boards. This creates a vacancy. And the vacancies are handled essentially the same way as the charter tells us. So that's the nuts and bolts of it, I guess. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I think I've got two points, if I could, please, Tony. The first one, you said whether it's Commissioner Piccolo or anybody else that gets appointed, it's not really to a two-year term to fill the vacancy for Larry. It's, it's really the first two, the first two years of a four-year term. Is that correct?
It's only, when you fill a vacancy, it's not so much how much, it, it's not so much the term of the person who used to be a commissioner. When you fill a vacancy with a new person, that person serves until the next general election.
Right.
And because of the unique circumstances here, where we just had one, that term is gonna be two years and a few days. If, if, if this would have happened, you know, 90 days before the next election, that commissioner would serve 90 days and then, and then be up for election. But it has nothing to do with the term of the person that individual is replacing. It's, it's based on what the Section 2.7 says. So you serve until the next general election if you're so appointed. And that's why whoever is so appointed is gonna serve until the next general election. Irrespective of whether Larry had a two-year term, a four-year term, or whatever. Doesn't matter.
Right. But at the next election, that seat will also be filled at, as a, as a, as a two-year seat. Is that correct? That's my understanding. So we'll have, in effect, two, two years, two, two people elected to two years at the next election.
Well, I think, and I, my understanding would be, it would be the same type of thing as here, where that you, you'll go by highest vote-getters or whatever. As far as that goes, I don't know that that's necessarily true, that it will have to be a two-years.
I'm not taking my personality, others. I think the problem you come up against in two years is you, we stagger it, so there's always four, possibly four new commissioners. If you have two, if you now have four, four years and one, two, we're, we're out of whack for that. So I think that's what Greg's going after. Is that correct, Greg?
That is correct. Discussion, I, I, I think there's gonna be a cycle that, as we had that discussion through some different things, that might be the cycle. This one cycle may have to be that way, because I, I believe the interpretation is, as I stated, that we're not finishing a term. There's no, no real finishing a term here. It's until the next election. So I, I believe that that would, yeah, the numbers will be different in the next election for that one term, or for that one cycle of an election, because I don't think there's any other way to do that.
Right.
Okay. All right. Who else has a question or comment?
I don't really have a question but a comment. And, and talking with Tony, I think a couple of things were apparent. Obviously, I don't think a scenario like this is, is, is likely to happen again. But what potentially could happen, or, or really a more likely scenario is, is if, if take the same, the same scenario that, that just happened, if, if, if someone turned down a commission seat, someone like Nick, luckily, I think Nick has a ton of respect on the commission, but someone like Nick would essentially could have been overlooked if, let's say, for example, maybe I was looking at running commission, I ended up winning a seat. After I thought about it, maybe I, I ended up saying, you know what? That's not for me. I don't want that seat. Someone like Nick, who got 1,400 votes, wouldn't automatically slide into that role. And now, there's nothing we can do now about it now, but somewhere in the future, I think an amendment could merit, at least looking into, to that, because like I said, in a scenario where, especially where you may potentially have multiple people looking to run to put their name in for mayor or things like that, they may use that, that extra seat or that vacant seat as a, as a way to, to, to really boost their standings within the commission. I think having some sort of amendment where if, if in a scenario like this, with, with Nick getting a certain percentage of the votes or a certain number of votes, he should, he should automatically be considered for that spot. And again, like I said, I don't think a scenario like this is probably ever gonna happen again. But it at least shed a little light on a potential scenario that is not the same, but very similar in, in how it works itself out legally.
I think, Dan, what it's a term that we've used a little bit as we've been talking through this process, is that, that does show that what you're saying really shows the will of the people. I think someone who still had a significant amount of votes that has the experience, you're right, I would hate to see that we, we lose out on that because that is showing the will of the people still, that, that there are that many folks out there who felt that way to make that vote. So I know charter amendments are difficult, but we've got a number of things we've been talking about in the charter here lately, so there may be a, a good time to do some examination.
That's a good point. Very, very valid. And just as a little background to Danny and everyone else, too, that what has typically happened on the, actually fairly rare occasions where we have had contested elections, for the person or persons that have not obtained an office through an election, through a contested election, the city staff and commission has gone out of their way to try and find seats on boards and other activities within city business to give them an opportunity to, or an outlet for their public interest. Kind of as a reward for that, you know, the ability to run or the, their willingness to run, we've gone out of our way, I think, in the past to try and keep them involved in city business until perhaps they have a chance to run again. Or even in some cases, we've appointed them back onto the commission. So is there any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. Well, I guess we don't need a vote on this one, do we? So it's just the end of our discussions. Next up is the appropriations. Is anyone in favor of paying the bills?
Pay the bills, appropriations.
Okay, we have motion support. Sarah, if you would please call the vote.
Commissioner Piccolo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pitts?
Yes.
Commissioner Stahl?
Yes.
Commissioner Almond?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Yes.
Mayor Mabes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion has passed. We've paid the bills. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move to commissioner comments. Let's see, first up, Nick.
Actually, just, just a couple as we, we head into Thanksgiving, just ask everyone to be safe, be careful, and it's been an unusual couple of weeks, and just despite whatever's going on out there, I would just encourage people to remember the blessings of family and friends and and health as they have it, as, that we have a lot to be thankful for, even in the midst of all that's going on.
Well said. Thank you, Nick. Audra?
Um, I just wanna send my condolences to Larry's family. I've been thinking about him a lot as we've been planning our Shop with a Hero event at Child Advocacy. For the last seven years, Larry's been our Santa Claus out at the Meyer store during the event, and you guys know what he was like as Santa. He was pretty amazing. So didn't matter if you were at the event, or if you were just out there shopping, he had a tendency to pull people over to get pictures with him or onto his lap. I've got some great pictures of grown police officers sitting on his lap that are just great to have. So I'm gonna be missed. I had just talked to him just a couple of days before the last commissioner's meeting about being our Santa again this year. Of course, the event will look different, and he was gonna it's a drive-through event, so he was gonna stand and wave at the kids as they drove through, but you know, things have happened. So we'll miss him. I'll definitely miss him as Santa Claus. I didn't get a lot of time with him in the city commission arena, you know, just the last two years, but I've enjoyed the time I, I got to know him. So just sending thoughts and prayers to his family. I know the holidays are gonna be rough. And to all of you that were good friends with him as well. So Nick, I hope you'll consider what we talked about tonight and, and whatever, you know, format, we have to go about that. I think you're a huge asset to this commission and probably one of the people I've learned the most from in the last two years. And you're very level-headed and the voice of reason many, many times, and that's been important. So just happy Thanksgiving to everybody and, and try to stay as healthy and safe as you can. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle?
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Again, thanks to the Alma Fire Department and the St. Louis Fire Department and Alma Police Department that helped with Larry's funeral and Lux's funeral home. There hasn't been many funerals this year, and to see, I, I believe there was probably a couple hundred cars and the caravan to the cemetery. So thanks, everybody, for that. And yes, Nick, I hope that you will consider our, our request. We'd like to work with you for a few more years and interrupt your comments. I almost did it tonight just for fun. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Roger.
Is that me?
You, yes, you are next.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. I, I will agree with sentiments toward Nick continuing to serve on the commission. I would be very, very happy if that were to take place. This has been a strange year, and people have said how great it was gonna be once we get 2020 behind us with all of the bad stuff that has gone on. But my daughter reminded me that we always have something to be thankful for. My grandson survived a COVID attack a couple of, or month or so ago. I survived what could have been a fatal head-on collision with a minor injury. And there are lots of things still to be thankful for. So let us give thanks.
Roxanne?
I just, Nick spoke very well about that we need to remember to be thankful for things. It's, it's tough in the, the midst of crisis to remember, but we, we do have things to be thankful for. And I will always be thankful for Larry's friendship and help both, both personally and professionally. And I do hope that Nick stays on because we're, we're better with him. So thank you and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Roxanne. Matt?
I don't have a whole lot to add tonight. I, I would, would just like to say it was interesting when I, I first met Larry, he was a I don't know if Larry was still on the fire department when I got here. I can't remember. It was, it was within that timeframe, and I was a police officer, and so we all know the natural rivalry. And yet Larry was one of, was the guy that showed me around Alma when I first got here. And so I think we're gonna miss that. So, and you're right, there's a lot to be thankful for, and we just have to remember that. Gets tough at times, but you know, I hate to be cliche, but tough times and tough people. So we'll, we'll keep forwarding on. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Excuse me?
Do you have anything to say?
I do. Yeah, I do. I, you know, I, I think we all throw around these words a lot, like icon and life well-lived, and I've used those words before, too. What I gotta tell you, you know, Larry Mott was just a special person. And I think everyone, everyone ought to read that obituary. And you talk about a life well-lived. I mean, Larry Mott wasn't just on these boards. Larry Mott got his hands dirty. With Habitat for Humanity, he wasn't just on the board, he was pounding nails with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. He was the, the big brother. The Santa Claus. How many kids sat on Larry Mott's lap? How many Christmases did he make for these kids? And then we could talk about the, the fire department and everything else that he did. But I tell you what, I was talking to my son, Vinnie, the other day, and he said, Dad, you won't believe how many people on Facebook said to, Larry Mott was my grandpa. Larry Mott didn't have that many grandkids. But all those people who truly felt Larry Mott was their grandpa, he was a, such a special person. And we are really gonna miss him. And for his, I, I mean, I know, I know a couple of his kids. I was lucky enough to coach one of his grandsons. You folks, you're his legacy. And, and, and the world's a, a much better place because he was here, and it'll be a better place that you, that you, when you were here, too. And this is a tough Thanksgiving, boy, I tell you what. But we can be thankful Larry Mott lived in Alma, and Larry Mott touched all of our lives. He, he is gonna be truly missed, no question about it.
Sarah?
No, thank you. Nothing to add, other than my condolences to Larry's family. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And I, I, I can't say anything any better than what has already been said. There was a great man. I too learned a great deal from him, and the longer we served together, the more respect I had for him. So it was an honor to, to serve with him on the commission. He will be missed. And Danny, I hope you're right. I hope we don't ever have to deal with this issue again. So that would be the best-case scenario. With that, we can open it up to the public. If there's any members of the public that would like to address the commission, if you can so indicate. And I don't know, Erin or Sarah? Are you seeing anyone? I don't hear you, Erin. Are you telling us no one?
I'm sorry. Yes, I was muted. I did it, too. No, I don't see anyone indicating that they would like to speak. Greg, thank you.
So with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting for tonight. No mood.
Support.
Sarah, if you would take the tally one last time this evening, please.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Pitts?
Yes.
Commissioner Stahl? Commissioner Almond?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Yes.
Mayor Mabes?
Yes.
And Commissioner Piccolo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. The vote is taken. The meeting is closed. I thank everyone for being here tonight. Have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. I'll see you at least in the first meeting in December then. So.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, everybody.